I'd like to call the Harwich Planning Board meeting to order. It's Tuesday, November 27th, or excuse me. It's Tuesday, December 11th at 6:30. And with that, we can start today's meeting. Charlene, I have the wrong agenda, please.
Mr. Chairman, I think you need to give the notification about taping. And the question is, anybody in our vast audience is going to be taping?
And I will go grab if they're gone.
So, we're going to talk about this after the meeting, okay? So, the call to order includes a recording and taping notification as required by law. Thank you very much. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the chair. If there's anyone in the audience? And with that, we can begin the agenda. On the matter of a public hearing, there are no issues under Section A to discuss. In Section B, we have number one, A, the meeting minutes from November 27th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the meeting minutes. I make a motion that we adopt the meeting minutes as provided.
Okay. Second, we'll take a roll call because we have a member attending from out of town. So, we begin with you, David. All in favor?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Next, we have one, B, advisory opinions, zoning board of appeals, December 19th, 2018.
Nothing on these popped out at me. But if anybody has any questions on any of them, I'd be happy to review it and discuss it with you.
Charlene?
Yes, sir.
I had a question. Like, the first one on there, I mean, it looked to me like some of the things these folks are doing through the zoning board of appeals might be done through this board. Am I wrong?
Pre-existing non-conformities, only the zoning board of appeals can act on those by statute. Use special permits fall under the planning board. And that's actually something we'll discuss when we get to the accessory apartments. But if there is a pre-existing non-conforming situation and they want to expand that or a use, then yes, they would go to the zoning board of appeals. For example, case number 201838, where they are creating additional second-floor habitable space by increasing the dormers.
That's what brought it to my attention, yeah.
That strictly zoning board of appeals, if they were creating a use, that's a different story. So, just by creating habitable space, which is, you know, expanding upon a single or two-family dwelling, that totally falls under the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concern about the zoning board of appeals? Anyone? Craig?
No, sir.
Nothing? Alan?
Nope.
Mary?
Jim?
Joe?
Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. With that, we can proceed to old business and begin with the zoning review. Continued review and discussion. There are six topics, including number one, accessory apartment; number two, accessory apartments versus bedrooms and any accessory structure; number three, sign code, particularly A-frame signs and fines; four, wearable signage, sandwich board signs; five, retaining walls for septic systems; building height, floodplain. Charlene?
Start with number one. So, at the last meeting, you had requested that I forward, actually, it was a couple meetings ago, forward to Adam Costa, who serves as the board's counsel. Questions regarding three of these items, accessory apartments, sign code, A-frame, and retaining walls. He has provided comments back. I provided comments to him. And so, you have his latest and greatest comments that I handed out to you. You should have had them at your seat. And I'm going to bring up the redlined version of that so people at home can see if they are interested. I think the best way to do this is just to go through quickly his comments. And then, if you look at the handout I gave you this evening that has the red line on the second page, you'll find the comments related to his comments in the red line that he did. A little confusing, I apologize for that. But if you don't follow me, say, please stop, I don't understand.
Okay.
Okay. So, with regard to the accessory apartment, we did have a couple of sections wrong in this. So, that's pretty straightforward, his first three comments. The first one definitely is reference error, so we do need to correct that. He did ask about, actually, that was comments one through three. His fourth comment, which let me get down on this, had to do with the lot area and whether that lot area was only for the ones that would be allowable through a special permit. I did indicate to him that the lot area requirements are intended for accessory apartments by right and by special permit. He didn't have any comments back on that. So, he was good with that comment. His next comment had to do with another couple of errors. But his biggie that he found that was very interesting had to do with the planning board being the special permit grant. Oh, let me back up. Mass General Law now provides for three years for a special permit.
Yep.
Our bylaw says two years as provided in Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. We need to say one or the other.
Yep.
We can either say exercised within two years, period, or take, remove the two years and just have it say duly exercised or as provided for under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. So, it's up to the board to decide you want it to be two years or three years. You can indicate how many years you do want there. So, you need to have a discussion on that and give me a little guidance so I know what to correct there. I have no, you know, no game in that. It's whatever the board is comfortable doing. We do have other areas where we do have conflict in the bylaw.
Yep.
So, we may need to look at that to clean that up across the board.
Okay, Charlene, just to, for clarification.
Yes, sir.
We're under what is now number six, transfer of ownership, correct?
We, no. We are on what is number five.
Okay.
The applicant shall record with the registry of deeds for Burnsville County a certified copy of the special permit. And then, it goes on to say, if not duly exercised within two years, is provided under Mass General Law. Well, Mass General Law now says three years. So, we're contradicting ourselves here, so.
I was just below that and looking.
Yeah.
So, okay. Craig, do you have a question or a concern?
I do. Is there any reason to not follow MGL?
Joe's shaking his head.
I would agree. Yeah, no, there's no reason.
Okay.
No, if it says three years, we should do three years, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think in that Mass General Law may change from time to time, the best thing to do is just take out the two years out of our ordinance and just say in accordance with Mass General Law. And then, if they go back to two or if they go to four, we don't have to make a change.
Jim, do you think we have to put the Mass General Law in there or just say Mass General Law? In other words, should we say, in accordance with Mass General Law, Section, Chapter 48, Section 9? Or should we simply say, in accordance with Massachusetts General Law?
I would reference the section.
Okay. You understand what we're talking about?
Yes, sir. What I did, it's hard to see, but what I did is I've actually crossed out within two years.
Yeah. And that's my recommend, that would be my recommendation.
If that is the consensus, I can always go back and undelete that.
Yeah.
But if that's the consensus of the board, then I think we're fine.
Yeah. So, we'll strike through within two years and it will read, not duly exercised as provided for under Mass General Law, C dot 40.
Chapter 48.
Chapter 48, Section 9.
Yeah. That's fine.
Mr. Dave, would it be better to say in accordance with Mass General Law?
And just leave it at that?
Yeah.
Well, no. What I, to reference Dave's point, I would say in accordance with Mass General Law, but then also reference the section.
I think we have to, I think we have to, the chapter and section.
Exercised.
In exercise in accordance with Mass General Law, section.
Accordance with.
If you don't point to the section, then you come.
And then?
Exactly.
Is it possible that through other amendments that this, like this, chapter and section will change?
Highly doubtful. It's been two years since 1978, I think. So, and it's been the same section since the zoning code was put into place. And that was '76 or '78, one or the other.
A long time.
Might have even been '75.
Would it be uncovered on us to pay attention to this so we can change it in the event that the other one goes and that change?
Absolutely.
That's true, I think, with everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This two to three years is just, I mean, we can, the town has the right to say they only want a special permit good for.
X amount of time.
X amount of years, but can't go beyond the three years. The three years is what the state has put in. So, if somebody's bylaw is silent to that, then it defers to the state statute. Some towns, one year.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, the point is, if you're subdividing a piece of property, the goal for the town is to get it on the tax rolls and to get the higher taxes on the parcel of land. So, it keeps the developers' feet on the fire to make sure that they're actually proceeding because some developers will get a building permit or will get a special permit and then will go out to sell and, and it will just sit.
But once a subdivision is recorded, it's assessed, it's assessed as if it existed on the ground.
Sir, I assume these blue are our lawyers?
Yes.
Okay. So, he's suggesting that the only thing we do is change the two to three. So, it would read, not duly exercised within three years as provided for under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9. See it?
So, just keep, change it to a three.
Three.
Or you can do that.
Yeah.
Whatever the board would like.
I think we should do that, only because he recommends it.
Well, Joe, I mean, my concern about, you know, and then if the legislature changes it to four next year, we'll have to make another change. If we, if we agree that we're going to just be consistent with the state statute, then, you know, if the state statute changes, then we just go by the state statute. But if we put it, change the two to three and then the legislature changes it to four, then we have to make another change.
So, you wouldn't put any term in there, you just simply do reference the statute?
Yes, correct, Joe.
And then, if the statute changes to something that we do not agree with, 10 years.
Yeah. Then we could go back and make that change, of course.
Yeah. I don't have a problem.
So, are we good with, and if is not duly exercised in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Can I just make a suggestion? Can we say with that, if it's not duly exercised within the timeframe provided in Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9? Because then, at least you know it's a timeframe.
I don't think that's necessary.
I defer to all of you and what the consensus of the.
I defer to the consensus.
I personally would like to see the timeframe to just replace the two years. Then, we're at least still referencing time. But I defer to the board.
I would, I would suggest that honestly, let's keep it as simple as possible.
Less is better.
Yeah. Less is more, really. So, I would, I would like to suggest that if it is not duly exercised as provided for under Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9.
Okay.
Right.
I thought we agreed on in accordance with.
Yeah.
Yeah, in accordance with.
In accordance with, David, that's fine.
What Charlene just read before Mary made the comment.
And if not duly exercised in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9.
That works.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks, David.
I'm assuming that the two years or three years is only there for the convenience of the applicant.
Pretty much so.
Yeah.
Yep.
Anything else, David?
No, sir.
Well, he makes some recommendations in the next paragraph.
Yes, he does. And a couple of them are just general typos relative to, we need to say building permit instead of just permit.
Yep.
And it should say commission or not commission.
Yep.
The next thing that he talks about is, he said, isn't the planning board designated as a special permit granting authority under Section 325514 above? So, my response back to him was, if there's a lawfully pre-existing non-conformity involved, then the ZBA is the special permit of granting authority for accessory apartment. At least, that's how it's been handled in the past. This way, the applicant needs only go to one board. And I'll just, for the public, I appreciate that efficiency. Certainly, the ZBA authorizes changes, alterations, extension. And, Joe, this goes to what you were asking regarding the zoning board of appeals. Under non-conforming structures and uses under Section 32554 of the bylaw, but Section 32551H6 speaks of the provisions of the special permit issued by the planning board or zoning board of appeals. I'm not sure even where a non-conformity exists, how or under what authority the ZBA would issue a special permit for an accessory apartment because it's a use special permit. My language, not him. Either the accessory apartment predates zoning and is grandfathered, in which case, it has no special permit for use. The accessory apartment is in a pre-existing non-conforming structure, which, if altered, requires a special permit from the ZBA, but not for the use. Or the accessory apartment is new, in which case, it requires a special permit from the planning board, not the zoning board of appeals. So, what he's saying there, and he and I went back and forth further on this, is that because the planning board is noted as the use special permit granting authority, then they're really the only ones who can be granting the use special permits under our bylaw, the way our bylaw's written. So, what he's recommending is that, or zoning board of appeals be stricken from this. And after I thought about it a while, I went, ooh, I think he's really right there. I don't think applicants are going to be very happy because they're going to have to go first to the zoning board of appeals to get a use, to get the pre-existing non-conforming if they're expanding, and then come to this board for a use special permit.
Yep.
But I think that's just going to be the nature of that. One thing I do want to talk to you guys about in the beginning of the next year is the zoning board of appeals filing fee, it's either 325 or 365. Yours is 525. I think we need to decrease this board's special, only for a use special permit, not for site plan, not for other things. I did do a, to look to see what other surrounding communities have for filing fees. And the three, it's either 325 or 365. What our zoning board of appeals charges, other than Dennis, is second highest to anybody in the vicinity.
But, you know, if I might, yep. Charlene, I listened to the building inspector last night and he talked about.
That's very different and I.
I understand. But what I'm saying is, he talked about what they charge and what it costs them to produce a building permit, essentially. And I bet you, if we looked at ours, we'd probably spend every dime of that in terms of staff time.
We can have that conversation at another time. I just wanted to bring it up because, you know, there's a quite a big difference.
Everybody understand what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
What he said last night was, they were talking about building inspection costs. And what he said last night was that the costs don't come close to covering what it costs the town to produce a building permit. And I'm suggesting that, to some degree, it may be the same case here, in terms of our staff time and so forth.
If I did the fees based on my time, sometime I will provide for you the filing fees that Dennis charges. It costs $1,500 to get a special permit in Dennis. To me, that's crazy. That's just, it's just not right. You know, some things, yes, you pay for, but other things, I think, are just the nature of, you know, the business. So, but.
Matter of interest, I've had occasion to represent private clients over in Dennis. And they certainly, when you appear before that, it's not like appearing before this board or boards in Harwich. The boards over, the board that I appeared of, over in front of Dennis, they ran it up the flagpole, I'll tell you.
We run everything up the flagpole. Believe you me, there's stuff going on that you, we get the application and everything as clean as we can before it even comes here.
Yeah, I have to start with the hearing.
I don't know if they do that in Dennis. I don't know what process he uses.
Well, since we're the Harwich Planning Board, we're just going to stick to the way we do things here.
So, is the board, I know Mary's got something.
Go ahead, Mary.
My only other comment is that we do entertain from time to time waivers for fees. And, you know, our fees are, again, another tax on our taxpayers. And we entertain waivers for the general public. We've certainly entertained them and granted them to developers as well when, you know, people have submitted and withdrawn and resubmitted. So, you know, just food for thought. It all factors in.
It does.
Because it doesn't reduce staff time on, when their staffs are moving to, to applications.
It's almost like whatever we charge isn't going to meet the cost.
True.
Right.
It'll offset the cost.
Some of the most complicated applications or biggest projects, some of them are so clean and so precise that my time, it's not as much time as you would think for me to review. I get some applications for an accessory apartment, I'll just use that because we're talking about it, where I'm like, oh, my goodness, and I'm spending hours on it because it needs so much extra work that you guys finally see in the end, but I'm dealing with upfront. So, you know, it just, yeah. So, you're good with me taking out or zoning board of appeals on that?
Yes.
And that was it for the accessory apartment.
Okay.
Unless there's something else that you had.
Anyone? Jim?
Yeah. At the last meeting that we discussed this, which I think was probably about two meetings ago, I brought up the issue about whether or not there was any mechanism that could be used in order to prevent some of these accessory apartments that were trying to ease the process.
Yeah, you're right. I need to, he did not provide that. No, he didn't.
Well, Charlene, if you could ask him that question.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because, I mean, the intent of this is to create more sort of affordable housing, workforce housing and things like that. What I don't think we want to do is ease the process of creating accessory apartments that are going to rent for $2,000 a week during the summer.
Excuse me.
So, if you could just go back to Adam and afternoon.
No, I'll do that. What I'll do then is, I have a quick agenda for you.
Yeah.
For next week's meeting. It is on the agenda, so we can keep that there.
Okay.
And I'll bring it back to you next week. I'll get that done real quick. Yeah, I'll talk to him in the meantime.
No, I mean, I think, I mean, my question is, is there a way that we can prevent that?
Yep, and thank you because I sent that question to him, but I.
But it didn't come back.
It didn't come back. So, no, I'm glad you picked up on that, Jim.
Thank you, Charlene.
I think, did I just read in the paper that Chatham raised the same questions just the other night they had a meeting on it?
Yeah.
And I think the timeframe.
Yep. I actually went to their meeting on a Sunday, on a Saturday.
Didn't, weren't they advocating a year?
They were, but there was a little pushback on that. So, I'm not sure where they're ending up with that. But no, I will definitely talk to him about that.
Okay, thank you.
I made a big next to it.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, we're finished with accessory apartment, Charlene?
We are, and I've lost my agenda.
And we're on to accessory, accessory apartment versus bedrooms and an accessory structure. We're good with that, too, correct?
Well, now we are because the issue came up with the board of appeals that they had confusion with when is an apartment an apartment and when is it just a bedroom in an accessory dwell, an accessory structure. And they were really grappling with that. Well, now that we know that only the planning board can issue those special permits, use special permits, you will see all of them.
Okay.
If it triggers the need for a use special permit.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board on that? Okay, sign code, A-frame, signs and fines.
Okay. I just want to make sure we got everything. And we did, okay. Minimize that. Go away. On the sign. And that is on page two and three of the email that you have in front of you.
Yep.
And the first thing he mentioned was relative to the definition. He said, in terms of usually being used modifies the latter part of the sentence to as written, depending upon your objective, that may be good or bad thing. It means that other types of A-frame signs, easels, signs, might be so qualified plastic sheeting. To avoid that outcome, he recommends adding a semicolon after usually a double-faced, freestanding, portable sign, semicolon, made of all these other things. And I think that would be appropriate.
And where's that in the code?
If you look at the, it's the very, it's the definition.
I see.
If you look at the proposed new definition, yep. So, he's recommending that a semicolon be added after portable sign, semicolon. I think it's appropriate. If the board is good with that, I will add that.
And strike usually?
We don't need to strike usually. You can if you want. Usually is kind of weird.
I would.
You can just start a double-faced freestanding.
Yeah.
Portable.
Yeah, I think usually is one of those words that is very.
Unusual? Sorry.
It's things the Superior Court are just going to grab on to, right?
It's like a built-in escape clause in one word.
Yeah. No, that, I'm good with getting rid of usually.
They put typically or something like that in these, in their.
No, I think just a double-faced.
Yeah, just start with the words, a double face.
Yeah.
What about how many you can have? Is that in there someplace?
It is. If you have frontage on one road, you get one. If you have to have, you know, a corner. If you have to have, you know, a corner lot, you can have one in each road. Similar to, you can have forty-eight square feet on each side if there is an entrance.
Not to be nitpicky, but, um, we're, we're talking about A-frame and then the description, how it's constructed. Is there a possibility of that, you could have something other than an A-frame? So, you have a solid piece of board that you have something on either side, but instead of shaped like that, you've got two braces on the bottom and one sign, like a, like a real estate sign type of thing?
As long as you can take it out and put it-
Could be three sides.
Can try together.
Uh, no, well, you're only allowed two sides. This provides that you can only have two sides and only one side actually counts towards your total allowable square footage for signage.
So, if I were to construct a sign like I just tried to explain-
Right, that you can stick on the ground as long as you can pull that out and put it away at night.
Two feet on the other side and just, that's not really usually an A-frame, not referred to as an A-frame.
As, as long as you can pull it up and put it in-
Okay.
Then, then you're good.
Then, we don't have to specify to that level of detail.
Our friends who have a restaurant on, on, on a corner-
Yep.
White building downtown.
Yep.
Okay. Are you telling me that because they have no entrance into that property, into that restaurant from that side street, they can't have a second sign there?
The way, I'm not talking A-frame, you're allowed forty-eight square feet of signage at each entrance to your establishment. There has to be an entrance. If you've got a flat wall with no door on your side road, the way the bylaw's written is you're not entitled to forty-eight square feet, 'cause no one can enter through there. I didn't write it, that's-
I understand. I, I just wanna make sure I understood.
But what this is providing for is if you do have frontage on two roads and you can get an A-frame sign on your own property, you can have it there regardless of whether you've got an entrance or not.
Thank you.
Any more comments? The, the sandwich board sign is, when I think of sandwich board, I think of a person wearing a sandwich board.
We'll get to that, that's on the agenda next.
Okay.
And I have an answer for you.
Okay. Okay.
So, one question if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Ma'am?
It's kind of to Craig's point. By defining it as an A-frame easel sandwich sign, should we just say a, a freestanding portable?
You can call it whatever you want. Right now, it's-
Because we don't-
Right now-
Don't wanna restrict-
Ri- right now, under the bylaw, there is a definition for A-frame easel sandwich sign. So, if you wanna delete that-
I'd almost suggest, uh-
I'm, I'm game for anything.
I'd almost suggest a portable freestanding sign, including A-frame, including but not limited to A-frame easel sandwich signs. Because then you've, your definition still fits. It's double-faced, freestanding, portable. Doesn't have to be an A-frame, to Craig's point, if somebody makes a, puts two back-to-back.
What, whatever the board would like, I'm, I don't disagree with you, Mary. I think that makes sense. No, I think it makes sense.
I don't typically draft when I'm sitting in a meeting, so.
Yeah, I know. So-
A double-faced, freestanding, portable sign, made of wood, cardboard, plastic, et cetera? And that's the way it will, will read, Charlene?
Well, that's the definition. But what, what you're defining is what is, is what Mary's bringing up.
Less restrictive, A-frame easel or sandwich sign. Right, Mary, you're saying?
Maybe it's portable, maybe it's, um, non-permanent.
We don't wanna use permanent, though, because-
Right.
It's still goes towards the sign area that you're allowed.
The forty-eight square feet.
What about his, his suggestion about adding the semicolon?
We already did that.
We did that, yeah.
Yep, we did do that.
Okay.
So, I mean, this isn't locked in yet. As you may remember, at one of the last meetings, the board did say that they want to send it to the Chamber of Commerce, to Cindy, and, um, have a meeting with, with their group to go over this. Before it even goes to the selectmen, which I think is a smart idea.
I think so, too.
Well-
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, my comment, I think, goes along with Mary's, and I think probably the majority of the, the planning board here, is that all of the types of signs we're talking about are not A-frame. I mean, some of them, they may be two-sided, but they're supported by some type of support on the bottom, and they may be just flat.
Yep.
Post-A-frame.
If there's something else you wanna call this?
Well, we could, we could just call it a, a double-faced, freestanding, portable sign, which is really the definition.
Or it could be single-faced.
It could be single-faced, um, I mean, most of them usually are double-faced, but you're absolutely correct, it could be single-faced. So, maybe just a freestanding portable sign.
Oops.
Sort of making it the most general as possible to-
Freestanding one word or hyphenated?
I think it's one.
Freestanding?
Portable sign, that's one word. Freestanding portable.
We're lawyers, Jim, not English teachers.
Right, and I have to use autocorrect, whatever.
So do I. So, it would be freestanding portable sign, a double-faced, freestanding, portable sign, semicolon, made of wood, cardboard, plastic or other lightweight and rigid material having the capacity to stand on its own supports with no moving parts or lights.
I would, I would suggest a single or double-faced, because if they put one up, if they put one-
Oh, that's a good point.
Just facing outward.
Yep, yep.
You still want the one side to count.
A single or double-faced, freestanding portable sign. Very good.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. His, his next comment had to do with, I had the wrong, we, we were putting it in the wrong section of the bylaw.
Yeah, twenty-eight C?
Yep. So, it should be three twenty-five, twenty-six K. Um, and, but he goes on to say, but you'd probably also want to state explicitly, A-frame easel signs aren't subject to the other subsequent sections in Article seven. Or specify with sections they're subject to in which they're not. I, I think I would add the language, um, that they are not subject to subsequent sections in Article seven. Does that make sense to folks?
Sure does.
It does to me.
Yep.
So, this is gonna be twenty-eight? Nope, twenty-six K. All right. And I will add that.
Can I ask, am I reading this wrong? H-three? Is sign area duplicative, the sign area, sign area?
Oops.
Yep. Wow, nobody's picked that up.
That's the double-sided one, Mary.
I thought about that for a second, Craig, actually.
Very well done.
Good catch.
That's a good one.
What is it? You can't see the trees through the forest or the forest through the tree, whichever? It's like, after a while, it just-
Yep.
And I would say in five, you need to pick up the, the single or double-faced. So, I'd call it a portable.
Only one-
Portable sign?
Yes.
Whatever we define it up as, above, as a defined term.
Okay, only one freestanding portable sign. Per business may be located. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do I understand that when we get this drafted together- we're gonna send a copy to the Chamber of Commerce? Is that what we're doing?
Yes.
And then, and then we'll meet with them?
I don't know if you'll meet with them as a group, because then you'll need to post it, or if, I mean, I certainly can, can meet with them, and if there's one or two of you that would like to meet with them. I think, I think, um, Jim, you had said something about, you know, possibly entertaining a meeting with them.
I, I, I've had prior meetings from the planning board. They have a meeting room in the chamber building down there that we-
Yes.
Have used in the past. You also serve a pretty decent cup of coffee.
Uh, criteria, uh, I have a comment on, on, under H-two. When you talk about the sign should be six square feet or less per side, normally the way that is written, the sign should be no more than six square feet in area per side.
Yeah.
That should, after add the or less.
Okay, shall be-
No more than.
No-
Six square feet in area.
In area, yep.
Than six square feet.
And if you're talking about the height of the sign, are you talking about the length of the sign and the, and the vertical dimension or the, or how, how high the sign is? Because if you want the, the dimension of the sandwich port sign to not exceed three feet, then you need to say that, because the width read it, worded now is the height of it from the sidewalk, so it could be, if it's a fairly flat sign with, with the two sides wide apart on the feet, it could be four feet long, still the more than three feet high.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three feet by, three feet in height by two feet in width.
Well, I think, the long dimension should not exceed three feet. And the, or the vertical dimension should not exceed three feet.
Correct.
Instead of height?
Take the, take the word height out of there?
That should be no more than six square feet in area per side. And the height, the maximum length of the vertical dimension in the sign is three feet.
What I've written is the sign shall be no more than six square feet in area per side, with the vertical dimension not exceeding three feet.
That's good.
Is that good for everybody?
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
Dave, this is Craig. I thought when you first were, started speaking, that you were referring to the height from the sidewalk to the top of the sign?
That's what it says now.
Yes, okay. So, is the proposed language change, will that mean, and I'm just thinking, I'm looking at this easel over there, the easel is probably five feet or six, ten feet high, but it's the top of it is twelve feet off the ground, because two feet of it is legs of the easel. So, do we, do we need to get that specific and say it can be no more than-
That's a good point.
Six feet, the top of the sign can be no more than six feet? And your three feet can be anywhere between flat on the sidewalk up to whatever the maximum height is?
If we're going to allow these signs to have frames that extend, uh, below or than the sign panel?
I'm having trouble hearing you, Dave. I could hear you before, but now I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay. If, if we're going to allow A-frame signs with a, with legs on them, so the actual sign panel is a foot above the ground?
Yep.
And then you have three feet more if it's fairly vertical? But this, but, but the way this is worded, if, if, if we, if we want it regulated at the total height to nine feet, three feet, uh, the way it was worded is probably okay.
Right. And, and in that case, you would, your three feet starts at the sidewalk?
The intent was that the, it was not supposed to, if, if I walk up to a sign, it should hit my belly button, assuming that's three feet.
But, but the actual face of the sign may be three and a half feet, because it's on a, it's planted on an angle.
Mr. Chairman?
If our purpose is regulating how tall the sign is, how many, how high it is above the sidewalk, what we add is fine. If the height of the sign, the panel, is no more than three feet, then we need to add another centimeter.
And, and just so we all know, they're not allowed on any private or public sidewalks-
Right.
Per the bylaw, already. We're not changing that. That's still in-
So, if, if you have it, like, say in front of, uh, the new building or someone, is all of that sidewalk?
They, they would not be able to have an A-frame sign on the sidewalk.
That's correct, David. They, they-
That's all public?
The way the bylaws, or the way the sign code bylaws written right now, regardless of this bylaw that we're working on, no sign period can be on a sidewalk, whether it's public or private.
Yes. It'll interfere with-
If they only put it in the tree strip there?
Um, the mason jar, for example, has a grass area in front of their building. They put their A-frame sign in the grass area.
On the other hand, the building next door, which according to a sign that just went up, is gonna be some type of a market or something?
Yeah, it's gonna be a general store.
What, what's, what's a general store?
A market, a retail shop.
Yeah.
But we're, we're talking signs, though.
I was supposed to be quiet tonight, Joe.
Wait, David's talking.
Hold on, hold on, just a second.
We, we keep losing you, David.
I'm sorry, uh, what about Monahan? He has, usually has three or four signs up there.
He's no longer there.
But that's, that's where the, that's where this new raise of markets going, right?
So, in their sign, in the old Monahan building, there's a sign out of paper, and it's in the window, it says Murphy's General Store. I haven't gotten the specifics. I know it can't have food, other, or it can't have, they can't prepare food. They can have packaged food, like they have syrups, candies, and that kinda stuff. So, I have, I actually have a message from them, I need to, uh, return the call. So, right now, all I know is it's gonna be Murphy's General Store, at this point.
You haven't talked to Murphy.
Not yet. Talking to him tomorrow. Actually, I can talk to him tonight, 'cause they're from California. I had a question, though. Charlene had brought up a point. On number five, it says, "One double-faced sign per business located on property. A business with street furniture on two streets may have one such sign on each street front." You had brought up the point, they have to have an entrance.
That's only for wall signage.
Okay, good. Just wanted to clarify, 'cause we were talking back and forth about a couple things, just wanna make sure, because Joe had asked about a property. So, they could actually have, on that side street, a portable sign? Just double-checking.
Okay. Sir?
So, what are we doing with number two?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chairman?
Well, hold on for a second.
Okay.
Okay? Time out. Now, I'm gonna say something, and it's, we're really sorting fly dung from pepper, right? So, what I would like us to do is decide what we want, because we're certainly taking a lot of time on what should be a fairly simple issue, right? Three feet in height, two feet in width, six square feet. If it's, if it's with six inches of, of, of posts or whatever, then it's three and a half feet, and then you have to compensate with the width to hit the six square feet, correct? So, so what do we want? Do we want three square feet or, or six square feet, which is- Do we want three square feet or, or six square feet, which is three times two? Or do we want something else? So that's the question.
The way that other signs are defined, the way a sign is defined is the actual stand is part of the sign.
Correct. So that means six square feet.
You get three by two.
Right.
Two by three.
But that means that the sign has to sit on the sidewalk.
Correct.
And cannot have any legs. And then the sign itself starts some number of inches or feet.
No.
Why?
Okay.
No.
It means the legs are part of the sign. So if they choose to have six inches worth of leg, the area of the actual.
Sign.
Type-written sign may be smaller, but the, but from the, but the legs are gonna be included.
I'm not sure that's clear the way this is currently written.
You're right, it's not.
It is or not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we're looking at it outside the scope of the way that signs are defined in the overall bylaw. I could be wrong. I'm happy to look at it again outside the.
I believe you're right.
The meeting, but.
Okay, Jim.
Okay, the way I was reading this, um, the way it is now, which is the way I think it should stay, is that the absolute height of the sign, whether it has supports or not, is three feet. Now, in our discussion here, we seem to be assuming that that means it can't be any more than two feet wide. Well, if the sign itself starts six inches up from the, from the ground, can't the sign be a little bit wider than two feet as long as the sign itself doesn't exceed the six square feet? Because most of these signs that I see are wider than two feet wide.
Playing, playing devil's advocate then, you could theoretically have a sign that, that has wording on it that is six inches high and whatever, well, six square feet wide. The whole entire width and more than the sidewalk. That's not our intent.
But we can't have them on the sidewalk anyway.
Well, okay, we haven't got there yet, but that, that was one of the questions I raised last, or last meeting was, what is the, where does the sidewalk start and end?
But it doesn't matter because if it's on a public or private sidewalk, they are prohibited.
Right.
So, for instance, is there, um, again, I say where does the sidewalk start with the, somebody referred to the eyebrow building, whatever it's called, Camelot.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And so their sidewalk is probably deeper.
Right to their building, so they.
From the curb to their building.
So they would not be able to have a.
So essentially, the only place that you could have a sign is if there were a tree belt.
There, there are other ways to do this, and I will use the white building on the corner that was brought up earlier that has a, has a porch on the front.
Right, yes.
Not a very wide porch. They could hang a one-sided or two-sided, you won't be able to see it very well, on the end of their porch, they could hang one of these six-square-feet signs to say, "Oysters a buck," or whatever. So there's nothing precluding somebody from hanging a sign as long as it does not exceed six square feet. And as long as it goes up however long before or after, um, you know, the business is open. But it can't stay there.
And as long as it doesn't pre- present a hazard to the passersby in the walkway.
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, Mary?
So I think too, you've also got the real estate building, um, is it Kinlan Grover that's in the?
They've got a porch.
They have a porch.
Yeah.
So they actually could probably put it on their porch if they wanted to on the ground.
And I've actually seen it on their porch.
So there are other places. But the, the purpose of the sidewalk is that that's your, your way.
Right.
And you can't infringe on the.
Right, and we did this last summer, have a visually impaired person actually.
Yeah.
Bump into a sign.
Joe.
So why are we automatically opposed to them not having it on the sidewalk?
The sidewalk is a way. It's no different than a street. In, in my mind, the sidewalk is the, is the public way and you, and where, if the architectural access board comes down and, and, um, comes down the street.
The visually impaired woman who.
We could be, we could be fined for it.
Crashed into it because it was in the sidewalk.
And then who's under control of the sidewalk.
So regardless of. Excuse me, to define size of, of sign and all that kind of stuff. If the sign, if the description you just described of the woman who fell or whatever knocked into it who was blind, the sign was on the, if the, if the sign were in compliance, that never would have happened. We're trying to regulate the sign based on people walking on sidewalk and it being a hazard to the people walking on the sidewalk, but we already have a rule that says it can't be on the sidewalk.
Exactly.
So what are, what are we trying to accomplish by this level of detail?
There, there are, there are people who want the ability to have an, have, I'm gonna call it an A-frame sign. Have an A-frame sign. We have no provision, we have a definition for it, but we have no, anything else regarding that. The bylaw says in the prohibited areas, you cannot have it on a street, a sidewalk, public or private.
So we're defining or trying to define regulations that apply to a sign on private property?
And, and we do that with the sign code now.
Yes.
We are also trying to limit the number of A-frame signs.
Wherever they, not on the sidewalk, but on a porch or where.
I mean, there, there's been businesses that have had as many as six on their property. I mean, that's just.
Charlie, what is the rationale for not allowing signs, A-frame signs on private sidewalks?
It's a means of egress and access. If you're blocking away, you're, you're blocking away.
It is, it is, but it's in front of an entrance, but it, suppose there was no entrance there and the, the, uh, public sidewalk is six feet wide and then there's another six feet to the building face. I don't understand the reason for not allowing and put a sign, an A-frame sign up on their, on the sidewalk that they built on their property.
The existing bylaw in another section of the sign code says what it says. I, it's not, it's not part of this.
No, no, I don't know.
I, I don't know the rationale. I do not know the rationale. It's what we've inherited and what we are working with.
And.
Okay.
And I, I would not suggest that you go and try and change that because you won't get this passed at town meetings.
I wasn't going to. I was just wondering why, why it was there, if I, I was missing some rationale. Exit ways, yeah, you have to keep them clear, that's for sure.
Yeah.
You, you've got Mary and you've got Cindy.
My whole thought of a, of a private sidewalk is no different than a private way that's a street. It's, many of our streets are not public ways, many of our streets are private ways, but they still have to be open and maintained.
Well, you're still with the public as a right of access.
Yeah.
So I, I still look at the, at a private sidewalk the same way that I do a public sidewalk.
I just.
But if, if that, if that space that is the private sidewalk had been left as grass, you could put the sign up there, right?
Yeah, if it's on their own property.
Yes. Ellen?
Who enforces this?
The building commissioner.
Building inspector.
All zoning falls under the building commissioner.
So, like, during the summer in Harwichport?
They did go around last summer.
Did they?
Yep.
I took a ride out in East Harwich around the Stop and Shop and there's a number of signs out around that property as well. One on a sidewalk blocking the exit, fire exit door.
Oh, yeah.
That's a code violation.
I do.
Yeah, Joe.
No, it, it, and talking about this new building in downtown Harwichport, if the persons who built that building realize that essentially they were creating a public sidewalk, that sidewalk is twenty-five feet wide?
No.
I bet it's pretty wide.
We're Stop and Shop?
No, 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 downtown Harwich.
Oh, the new building in Harwichport.
I mean, the, the point I'm, I'm, I'm bringing up is that, whatever it is, it, it's, it's, it's a, it's a very wide sidewalk from the building to the street.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and, uh.
I thought they had a zero setback or like a five-foot setback.
It, it, I don't think it's zero, but I don't think it's over five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's less than five, Charlene.
So the rest of that is town property that they just built the sidewalk on?
Well, the, they, they.
They disturbed the, it's not the town. They disturbed the state sidewalk.
The state sidewalk because that's through twenty-eight.
Oh, I see.
So the right-of-way goes beyond the travel right-of-way and includes the state sidewalk. And so what they just repaired and replaced was what they dug up, which was part of the state sidewalk. And then there's only a very small area which goes up to their building from the, the state property line.
So I have a question and I'm trying to think of everyone on the street down there. We're talking about private sidewalks as well. The building that used to be what many of you will know as the Sword and Shield has like Cranberry Jewelers, Ten Yen, and then what used to be Buc-E's. Cranberry Jewelers right now has an A-frame sign right there. Can't, it, with this new one, are they going to be able to have that?
Well, technically, under the existing bylaw, it shouldn't be there.
Yep.
So really, I mean, if we look at this whole sign situation, unless it's hanging, it can't be on the ground.
Right.
I mean, I'm not being silly about it, but I'm looking at, I'm trying to visualize it too. There are buildings that those are their private, like right outside Cranberry Jewelers parking, I mean, door is a frame and it's not impeding anyone's walking or anything. But is that gonna be able to be there?
Perhaps not.
Right, so I mean, I'm trying to think of this bylaw and what we're trying to do. We've got signs, and I mean, believe me, I wanna be able to help all the businesses, but let's really keep going with this. If they're gonna be able to hang them, all right, fine. But why do they have a portable sign? They, they, if, if they're, like even the art gallery, they have a beaut- they should be able to have, if it's not within someone's walk- I'm trying to be visual and I'm using my hands. Anyone that's watching this at home is thinking I'm crazy tonight. But if they're walking and it's not in the actual sidewalk walking area, is there anything in the bylaw that we can put within a foot and a half out your door, you can have your portable sign? I mean, I don't know, we, we've gotta figure out, I think we have to give a little bit more info in here so they know exactly where they can have their sign on their private sidewalk.
There, there's other areas of the bylaw then that would need to be changed.
This is a, a challenging topic.
And I wasn't gonna talk tonight.
Your, your private sidewalk and your public sidewalks, they're defined by the street layout. So it's, and there it's through twenty-eight, so it's the state layout. So there are, there are meets and bounds of that, of that state layout that, that are actually gonna define what the right-of-way is. So we wouldn't have the authority to say you can come out your door a foot and a half or two feet if that's within the, the state right-of-way.
And it varies through there. It's not a consistent width.
I know, it's, it's not like one street away. And that's why I was sitting here thinking about it and visualizing the stores that's, this will affect. And right there, that one building.
Well, I mean, technically, there are, there are signs up now that are totally illegal.
And that's what we're all trying to fix so that everyone has an even playing field. So I don't know what the right answer to that is.
I, it may mean building out onto their own property a green space, a landscape space that they can put an A-frame sign on. I, I don't have the answer.
But even that, if that's their private sidewalk that we're saying they can't have the sign on now, they really couldn't build like a little box either and stick a sign in?
Well, technically, actually, they could on their own property. If they're gonna win, if they're gonna create green space, they can do that on their own property. They can't go into the state layout. And as long as they have the required width, um, to the doorway that they need to get to and don't impinge that, I mean, you see that in a lot of, um, communities where they have little gardens out in front and they may have a sign in there.
Right, I mean, the, the best example I can think of is if you walk down Newbury Street. A lot of those buildings on Newbury Street have planters that are on their property line which define the public right-of-way versus the private property. And then they do things inside of that planter.
And I think that's gonna be where we, like, so when we do the meeting with the members of the businesses down there, I think that's where we educate them of how they can have that extra signage that they're looking for to replace maybe this A-frame that they were used to doing. Now say, okay, this is what can be done. It's just gonna be an educating process, I think.
Right, but I think the, the point that Charlene has been making is that if we're going to allow something like that, there has to be some physical definition as to where the private property and the public property is defined. Right now, I don't think in Harwichport, that's clearly done.
No, there, I mean, each individual property is gonna have to get a surveyor out there to determine where the, where that line is.
And using the art, the, the art gallery as an example. I mean, I seriously doubt that the route, uh, twenty-eight right-of-way goes right up to their, their front wall.
Right.
So I'm sure they have a little bit of.
That is a wide sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a little space.
There's a bunch, like even Cranberry Jewelers, that building, there, that could be, the gallery is another one. So there are some, and that's what I was trying to get at, at, okay, if they're, that's a private, how do we?
Right, but I think the, the issue for public safety is that needs to be clearly defined because right now it looks like it's all part of the public sidewalk and therefore people are going to use it as part of the public sidewalk. And if you have somebody that's visually impaired, they're gonna hit into something. So, you know, it require, you know, if we're going to allow that flexibility, then there needs to be work with the private landowners there to have them define what's private and what's, what's public.
But if the, the description you just gave is, if our understanding of sidewalk is from the curb, the street to the front of the building, a combination of public and private, and our rules on the books today say you cannot have a sign on public or private.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk, then everybody that, uh, description you use, Cranberry Jewelers, would have to build something so it could no longer be defined as a sidewalk.
Yes, some type of physical.
Not just a line of demarcation, but it would have to be different than, you know, if it's concrete now, you'd want it, right?
And again, you think the.
If they wanted a sign.
Right, it would almost have to be like the pretty black, um, garden club boxes, not that wide, but something like that is what it, in essence, it would have to be against their building.
And we actually had some of those in not great places and they had to be moved.
Yeah, right. And again, going back to the example that I use, you know, which again is Boston, but Newbury Street, where a lot of the buildings just have sort of very narrow little planters, you know, that are about maybe a foot and a half high that basically are along the property line between the public right-of-way and the pri- and the private property in order to define what's public and what's private.
Cindy, um, is a, your best guesstimate for how many business owners now in town that have or contemplate signs on their sidewalk today? Forget the size or any of that, just physically on the sidewalk, public and private, realize that they're not in compliance with Harwich rules today. Does any, do you think anyone does?
We probably have twenty-two to twenty-five maybe down there.
Do you think they all know that they're in violation?
Oh, they do now. And not just tonight, but no, during the summer, the summer was a big test of it. With, you know, the year before, it was a slower getting going with it. But this, this summer, um, with building really going down and taking signs or putting stickers on them, But this, this summer, with building really going down and taking signs or putting stickers on them, yeah, people do know more about it, for sure. I still want to know who took the banner off my building, but...
So, if those people that still have signs out there, they know they're in violation and they're just basically sending them in anyway.
Well, no, I think more so because it's the off-season and they're just trying to do whatever they can to bring the business in, to be totally honest. I mean, this is a slow time, and if you don't have anything other than somebody, a character jumping up and down on side your door, you know, you need to have something to draw, and there's not a lot of traffic, foot traffic on the sidewalks, I think that's why, and it's only a handful, really.
Yeah, I, I, this is, I don't know whether I'm dealing with Murphy's Law or the old adage, the devil's in the details.
Yeah.
Yep.
But boy, it sure is the latter. You know, it's hard to believe that the town has a law that if somebody builds a building 150 feet from the, from the street, and they paved the entire distance, if that's considered a private sidewalk and you can't do anything on it, I put a, an A-frame sign.
I don't know that it is.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. Well, that's why I asked...
It would be a parking lot, not a sidewalk.
But what's, what is the definition of a sidewalk?
Yeah.
And what I thought I heard was from the curb of the street to the front of the building, regardless of whether the building's five feet or 500 feet.
Good point.
No, I, to my point, I think it's probably defined and a sidewalk is a way, so it's a way. So, if it's a way, meaning...
Defined by curb from, or from the street a certain width?
It, no, it depends on, it would, a ways and easement, right? So, so if there's a, if it's a private sidewalk that's, that's used for access and egress up and, up along, over, through, across, and it's a way, it may be considered a private sidewalk, however it's defined. And I don't have it in front of me.
Just because it's paved does not mean it's a way. The fire marshal can, can make that determination, but I, I think it's a real, a real stretch to, to claim that anything that's paved in the front of the building is, is an exit way.
Okay, Joe? Yeah, I, I just point out, look at the, the front of the hot stove. I mean, they, they set up a, an outside eating place there, which is used a lot in the summer, and it's between, it's between the sidewalk and the building. Yeah. Uh, where it's located. And I, I, I guess there, there is a sign there, not an A-frame, but there's a sign there for their business. And I'm, I'm assuming...
Is it on a sidewalk?
If what we're talking about, they could put an A-frame, as long as it was inside that railing that they have there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Jim?
Okay, um, not to get too technical about this, but my understanding for public ways, and I think this applies to sidewalks also, is that if the facility is held open to the public so that the public can utilize it, then it is considered a public way or a public sidewalk. If it is segregated off, and using the hot stove is a good example, their area in the front, there's railing, they have tables there, it is clearly just for the use of their customers, and therefore, can be considered private. But if it's just a paved area in front of the building, or an area with sidewalk in front of the building, that's being held out for use by the public.
Just, we'll let it go, but, and they've had a lot of problems with that little area in the front of their building. We don't, that's not relevant to this, I wouldn't even bring it up, but I'm sure you know that.
Okay. Are we on the cusp of any sort of decision or guidance? Are we even close? Should we continue this?
We have a selectman who's, who's in the back of the room, maybe he can contribute something.
Do, would we like to continue this? Sir?
Very downtime.
Hey, Larry.
Only that this has come to a concern to us of, of safety issues in the summer where the signs are forced them off. And so, we, as Cindy knows, we, as we do more times than you, than you would like, we pass the buck to you folks to try to sort it out. But it's a concern, I appreciate your discussion, but we've, we've had, we've had those issues raised.
Larry, if I might, Mr. Chairman, when you issue, you issue the annual all-alcoholic licenses and so forth and so on, do you ever put any conditions on things like this on them?
Not, not that I'm aware of. You know, seating, there's a noise, it's, you know, typical things, I don't know of any time we've, I know Charlene possibly...
I don't believe that they can.
We haven't...
Oh, no, we did it.
Yes, you can.
I was, I was counsel to the licensing board in the city of Quincy for almost 20 years.
I'd point to Charlene, we could look at, so far, I have no knowledge of this ever doing.
I don't believe they've ever done that.
They have the authority, they can.
I'm saying, I don't believe they've ever done that.
Let me, uh, let me say that even with that statement, we would not move without your recommendation. I'll still throw it back.
That, that's a very nice lateral air of best.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For your help. So, Mary.
If I may, um, do we know what the, what, I know we refer to the violation section for the penalties, do we know what the penalties are? Are they...
It's $150.
A day for each and every violation?
So, this sec, that next section is not necessary that we added. I'm going to just skip item number two for now, because we can debate this until cows come home. But with regard to H7, that is the incorrect section, and I need to correct that. That should be all the other requirements, including all the prohibited things, that it can't be. Um, and then finally, the new section, 32529I, is not necessary, because we already have a violation section of the bylaw that covers all of this, so we don't need that anymore.
Yep. Would there be any value to ask an opinion of the attorney to weigh in on our dilemma?
No.
No?
I don't.
I don't think he really can.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's going to be subjective.
It is what it is.
So, if I, if I understood correctly, then using, again, the hot stove as an example, because it's essentially walled off, we're saying what's behind the wrought iron fence is...
Privately owned property.
Privately owned sidewalk.
No, it's privately owned property. It doesn't have to be sidewalk.
It's not a way.
For example, the, the, the...
So, our regulations don't...
The mason jar.
Our regulations do or do not apply?
The mason jar has the public right-of-way, and then they have a landscaped area with a walkway going to their front door. Their A-frame sign is on their grass. It's not a sidewalk, it's they decided to landscape it.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's the difference between, are you landscaping it or are you paving it?
The Chamber of Commerce has grass in front, on the side, don't you?
Yeah.
Say it, you could, no, but you, to the point, you have grass on the...
Yeah. The Chamber of Commerce, the old Sword and Shield building on the side has a grass area. So, they can put a sign there next to their parking. That's theirs.
And do.
And they do, and that's fine, it's on the grass.
So, they actually, Charlene's right, they have a little paved area that has their signs of all the stores and businesses in there, and then they've got this little gravelly little thing that they have an A-frame. But with that, and it talks about this in here, as long as they are open, they can have their signs there. So, I think like with Cranberry Jewelers, we just need to have them, because they're in that building, move it over to the little gravelly area. I mean, if that's now becoming, that's a private, even though it's private, and this will again be another educational thing for these businesses, because I think they're not really truly understanding, even though they own it, and we were all talking about it earlier, it's, you can't put it there. Unless we come up with now a pretty little box that you can stick a sign in, if it doesn't...
Yeah. Actually, if I might, I'm glad Cindy mentioned that. At one point, the board had been discussing, and it had been brought up, item number six, the town may, the sign may be, may be displayed only when the business is open to the general public. There had been some discussion allowing it to go up an hour before, two hours before, whatever, that was never, so I don't want to belabor that this evening.
Ad infinitum, ad nauseam, I might add.
Yes. But think, we'll bring this back next...
Yep.
Thursday.
Please.
For a much briefer conversation, I'm hoping.
And you'll have a redraft.
Well, no, you guys need to let me know if it's an hour, I mean, I, it...
So...
There was just some concern that, oh my God, we got to put it up when we open, when, whereas if they're open at five for dinner, and if they can put it up at four o'clock so people know, opened at five, oysters for a buck, you know, that kind of thing.
Is there any reason, Charlene, why we should have A-frame signs on sidewalks at all?
We don't allow them on sidewalks.
Then, if somebody wants to put a sign in their window or inside their place of business, is, that's nothing that we have any control over.
Depending upon the signage in the window, it could be part of their overall signage requirement.
Right.
And, and this, this, what are we calling it, free stand, portable sign?
Yep.
Also counts towards their total overall signage allowable.
What the signs, what the portables do too is, say they're driving by, going to Dennisport or to an alternate location, they're getting to see quickly something that's going to grab their attention.
Right.
So, as long as we educate everyone that, where they can have it, I think we still should allow it, just really, like we do in the spring, the police and myself do a meeting with all the businesses that have liquor and entertainment licenses.
Correct.
We need to do this kind of a meeting in March with everyone so that they know, okay, this is what going forward you can do to have that extra promoting. I don't think we should take it away from them, I just think we just need to...
It needs to be done properly.
Yep, educate everyone, because it, it is a great thing to have, but we just need to regulate it a little bit.
So, the, so, so the point that I'm trying to, to make here, and it might be awkwardly done, but if we have a rule, then we need to enforce the rule, or we do away with the rule.
And last year, we did.
Okay?
This last summer, we did, and it meant...
Which isn't popular, but...
It was not popular, and the, actually, at that meeting that Cindy referenced, I was at that meeting to help discuss the sign code. And it was made very clear to folks that if you don't have a legal sign, it will be removed. And they, the building inspector did remove a number of signs.
Okay. So, I, I mean, I think we want to help business, absolutely. But we want business to help us too, right? It's a two, two-way street, right? So, no pun, but...
We don't want sign pollution either.
We do not. I mean, it's not a carnival, it's the town of Harwich, right? Or the towns of Harwich, right?
And a lot of, I mean, I reached out on the mass planters listserv, which is, you know, statewide, and actually, some people in New Hampshire and Rhode Island also sign on to this. But the majority of responses that I got was that they're either prohibited outright, or they require a special permit from, through the licensing, which means a selectman. Not even the planning board, not the zoning board, but it's the selectmen that have to approve what is there.
So, I, I mean, there were some things, if I could summarize for a moment, there are some things that I think we did very, very well tonight, right? We, we talked about, it should, it can be a single or a double, right? Double-sided sign, that's, that's good. Uh, I, I think David's contribution with the maximum vertical dimension, right, of three feet, could perhaps be supplemented with a maximum horizontal dimension of two feet, which would give you that six feet, right? And, and, and maybe if we referred to the overall dimension of 48, right, square feet, right, the, the total signage area?
That's someplace else.
Okay.
That's in a different section.
Okay. So, but this has to fit within that, right? So, maybe we should refer to that section as well. If, if, if it's, if it's at all logical, right? So, I, I think those are some, some considerations that we might want to think about. Jim, please.
Okay. The only thing that I'd like to comment on that you just said, Jim, is that if we have a maximum dimension in one direction of three feet and a maximum dimension in the other of two feet, then every sign has to be three by two.
All the same.
And that they all have to be exactly the same, and I don't think that's a good idea.
Well, then, we're going to, we, if, if it's all the same, then nobody can complain about, well, somebody's got a competitive advantage, right?
Well, no, I mean, we, we do have a regulation that it ha, it can be no bigger than six square feet. But why does it have to be exactly three by two?
It could be two by three.
Right. But, but what you had mentioned would not have allowed that, it could be, you know, two and a half by two and a half, or, you know, or, yeah. I mean, I think with the six...
Or it could be one by six, or any multiple of six square feet.
Right, exactly.
They've only got a green space of a foot wide, it could be like a ladder thing.
Yeah, exactly.
One feet wide and six feet high, yeah.
You know, Mr. Chairman, as we work, work our way through this, I think it's important to look at the history. This building inspector, I think, is probably the first building inspector who's gone out and looked at these things. And, and no deference to previous building inspectors, they were overloaded with...
I'm sure.
What they were doing. But I mean, I think that's, if we're going to do all this, the building inspector's got to play.
That's correct.
And this current building inspector apparently is willing to do so.
I, I just, I, I really believe that, that this is going to require some more discussion. And I don't know whether or not this board or this team feels the same way, and I'd certainly want to hear what everybody else has to say, because I'm not going to operate, you know, from a, from a position of a, of a bully or use this as a bully pulpit. But I think, I think we've got to kind of come to some, some terms that we agree on, and if we can't, then let's continue this discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
A suggestion that I would like to make is that we get input from the business community, and that maybe with Cindy's help, before we finalize this, we see if we can establish a meeting. Uh, and it could be at a regular planning board meeting where the business community would come, you know, I know you speak for the business community, but I think a broader sort of group of the business community could come and sort of have a conversation with us.
That's a great idea, and I think having it here, and maybe that being, I mean, we don't, we're now at eight o'clock and you guys still have a few more things. I don't think we want to have a lot on your agenda, even though you don't have, you know, I think if it's going to be a meaty kind of discussion for everyone's concern up at the table, you should probably have this and maybe one other thing that's, you know, that you need to do that night. Because as we saw, this went a little bit further. The good thing about this is that one, it's like having children, giving them all what they need to know, and then everybody's going to play nice. So, if, if we get this all together...
We hope.
Then everyone's going to be happy from all departments and everyone downtown as well. So, I think this is great if you want to do it, and we can take a look at January. Some of the businesses are closed, but I think they're around, so I think it's, you know, maybe either January or February, I wouldn't wait past that, because then these...
It can't.
Right. That's true too.
Yeah, because if we're going to get it on the warrant, pretend meeting, we have to do it in January.
Yeah. I mean, I'm fine with that, so...
Your meeting in January, January 8th, you have one hearing, and that's it so far in that agenda.
Yeah.
Well, maybe that would be...
We're going to have continued discussion on zoning.
Maybe that, that would be the time to do it.
Yep.
If you all agree to do that tonight, I will send an email tomorrow to all the businesses in Harwich Port, mark your calendars, this is your time to speak. And then, let, let's do it, I mean...
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea, I think, I would support certainly us doing, as long as everybody is on board with this.
I, I'm on board with it, I want to make sure that we're all comfortable and understanding of what the current rules and regulations are.
Yeah.
You'll see this next week.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and also throw out suggestion that some kind of simple, maybe one page with some bullet points, document... with some bullet points document be provided to the business owners prior to the meeting of, you know, here's what's led to this discussion, and here's what, in very broad general terms, what we're trying to accomplish. You know, safety, but also promote the business and.
Yeah, I think public safety should be first and foremost, and then everything else can follow. Because if we, if we look out for the safety and the well-being of our, of our citizens as well as visitors and so forth, that sets the tone, and, David?
I have a couple of comments to make when you get time.
Okay, go ahead.
If, if there's a fire marshal that serves Harwich, I would suggest you bring him, the fire marshal in. The fire marshal usually has the responsibility of determining where,
S Egress.
To the extent exit ways are needed for fire emergencies or other emergencies.
Yep.
And, you know, I, I, I really applaud holding this off and having a meeting with business owners because it's one thing to say, the good news is that we've got a signed regulation. The bad news is there's only three places in Harwich Port where you can put one.
But keep in mind, this isn't just for Harwich Port, this is townwide.
Townwide, correct.
Number of their businesses in the community.
So you have.
No, and, and it, that's, that's humor, anecdote probably applies to them too, so.
Yeah.
You know, you know, I, I really have a lot of trouble with the public, the private sidewalk restriction. I can understand how it may have evolved, but it, it may be the culprit here that has to be fixed.
Yes, you're right, David. That's something that we should probably talk about, but. Public and private is a, that's a, that's gonna get some peoples. Sir?
At one of these meetings, we oughta have the building inspector.
Oh, sure, I think we should have him at this next meeting.
Yep.
You know, when, when, not the, not the, the next one this month, but perhaps the, the meeting with the, the town business community, right, Cindy? Charlene, is that acceptable?
Sure.
I mean, just ask, I mean, he can't, we don't have to demand, that's it, right, we can't demand anything.
So with that being said, this is, the sign codes for everybody in Harwich, do we wanna have me send it out to all the Harwich Chamber members? And, I mean, that, that'll encompass all seven villages. We've started at one child, we're gonna go down the line, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you need to send it to everybody.
Yeah, I, I do too.
In effect, Stop and Shop Plaza with all of them.
Exactly, and that's why I thought of that too.
Stop and Shop, four hundred.
It's gonna be everybody, so this way we'll send it out. Charlene and I can get together and do like a bullet point thing before, so I'll do this email tomorrow, but then, as we get closer to the meeting, let them know this is what will be discussed. So they'll have it ahead of time too, and they can come prepared.
Sure.
Got it.
Yep. Okay.
We're a good team, Cindy and I.
Listen, I think this is all good. The discussion is really good. We are going in the right direction, so, next, in, in line, we have what the.
Wearable signs, this is easy. You can't have a sign on, on public property, and it has to be on the property in which it serves unless you get permission from the other property owner to have it.
Wearable signs?
Can't walk up and down.
I can't walk up and down.
No, no, no. You can't draw on a sidewalk and say beer this way and muffins that way. That's, you can't do that either, so that.
Can a guy wear it if he's older, no, higher than three feet tall?
Oh, boy.
Charlene?
Yes, sir.
Is Charlene the chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
Thank you. Have we done an analysis of that with regard to the First Amendment?
No.
Because basically.
The only thing I know that's guaranteed under that regarding signage are political signs. You cannot restrict political signs. I know of no- nothing else, and I'm, I am not doing that research, that.
No, no, I, no, I'm not asking you to do it, but I mean, I think there's an issue, and it gets into very strange issues, like how are wearing a sign different than wearing a T-shirt with a commercial message on it?
You can do that. What I'm saying, to physically wear a, a sign over your shoulders and walk up and down for Joe's Hardware Store, sorry, Joe, I don't mean to pick on you. It's already prohibited.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, if you have a T-shirt that says, you know, shop at Joe's, I mean, I wear a number of different Harley-Davidson T-shirts that advertise a number of Harley-Davidson outlets all over the country and the world at this point, and, you know, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, moving on, sir?
I'd like to.
Retaining walls for septic system.
Systems, yep.
Alrighty, so this one. This is, it should be section three twenty-five eighteen, so this was another boo-boo.
Yep.
That needs to be corrected. So that will be corrected throughout.
Yep.
I'll make that correction, I won't do it now.
Yep.
Additionally, with regard to, I'm trying to follow his.
Retaining walls for septic system on an improved parcel, he has highlighted.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, nope, before that. So his first comment, it may well, it may be that the outline version, oh, that's the correct. You might preface the sentence with the provisions of section three twenty-five eighteen notwithstanding retaining wa- we, we need to add additional language there.
Okay.
We do need to add additional language there to, to clarify that.
Yeah.
We did get into a little bit of back and forth regarding. Am I calling him back?
Please.
Hello?
Hi, David.
You got disconnected.
You were disconnected somehow, we're sorry about that.
Hello?
Can you hear us? David?
I'm here, I dropped the call somewhere along the line, I don't know what happened.
Yep, okay.
Thanks for calling back.
No worries. Well, we're going to continue. Charlene, go ahead.
Okay, so, we do not define retaining wall, it is in the definition of structure. The building commissioner has interpreted that because it is in the definition of structure, that anything over four feet high requires a building permit.
Yep.
And any retaining wall period needs to meet setbacks, and that's why we added the ten feet.
Yep. And that's from the line of the, of the property, correct?
Yes, that's from the property line.
Yep.
So. He doesn't necessarily agree with that, but that's how the building commissioner interprets it, and he said, then that's how he interprets it, that's how you have to go by it, so. Not too much here, just a couple corrections relative to sections and adding the preface, which I will add.
How about the may and shall?
Excuse me?
He's recommended that, that the may should be shall. See, it is written as permissive, but it actually applies a setback requirement that doesn't now exist, so I'd recommend that may be shall.
Where is the may?
That's what I'm looking for.
Oh, shall be setback, no less than ten feet, okay, on the very last line.
Yep, there it is, thank you.
Yep, 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 thank you for, for catching that, Joe. So I will make those corrections and also get those back to you.
Yeah.
And then the building height, I had nothing new on that for the flood plain. So I've nothing to share on that.
Can you refresh my memory, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Did we put a maximum on there?
A maximum on what?
Maximum height.
I, I'm not even, I, I don't remember.
Okay, 'cause I know that I had brought it up saying.
Yeah, I haven't even had a chance to work on that one, so I, I honestly, I'm sorry, I don't even remember. I have a good memory, but not that good to those kinda details. Do you wanna bring up the next meeting and the time?
Sure. So we, we're, retaining walls we're finished with, correct? And building height, we haven't even discussed.
You'll be having, oh, the accessory apartment, if I can go back to that. Are you comfortable at this point with me forwarding that to the selectmen, saying this is what you've come up with at this point? They did wanna review that before it gets into the formal board making its vote to refer it to them so we can start the public hearing process?
Yeah.
That was something you said that you would do bef- at the meeting that you had with the joint meeting.
Correct. Any issues, Jim, of course?
Yeah, the only thing I would like to get some discussion from the attorney with regard to this comment about, you know.
Oh, yes, then that, yeah, we're holding on, yes, yes, yes.
Before we go to the Board of Selectmen, because if we're gonna add something, that might be a very controversial item. So I would rather get that resolved before we go to the Board of Selectmen.
Yep. Yep, no, agreed, agreed, agreed. So the accessory apartment, it's that, I hope to have that language next week.
Other than that, I'm fine.
The sign code, I'll bring back a clean copy so you can read it better.
Yeah.
The retaining wall, I will make those, and the building height, I'm, I'm just not gonna be able to get that next week, even though it's on, I already have your packets for next week.
Leave it, leave it on there, we'll just, yeah.
If you.
Sir?
If you redo, can you send it out to us in the?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'll send it electronically.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so, yes, if we.
Oh, yeah, you'll get it before.
Have a chance to read it.
Absolutely, no, you'll get it before next Thursday's meeting.
Right today.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a big, big help, Charlene, thank you very much.
So I'll hand this out before you go.
Okay, so.
And you're good for four thirty on Thursday?
So the suggestion is our next planning board meeting is, is Thursday, December twentieth. It was previously scheduled for six thirty, the normal time, and we'd like to know if we can start it at four thirty in the afternoon. Jim?
The only concern I have about that is that there had been a few times, a few years ago, where the planning board and subcommittees of the planning board got extreme criticism for having subcommittee meetings at four or four thirty because of the inability of some members of the public to participate. And I would be very concerned about setting a precedent where we are, you know, irrespective of what's on the agenda, of, you know, having, changing the time to a time where some people may still be working, who might, you know, and again, depending on the agenda, might or might not want to participate in the meeting.
I would note that the two agenda, if I might, Mr. Chairman, the two agenda items are during a public meeting, but do not, the board does not have to entertain public comment on them.
Okay, Mr. Chair?
Sir?
I'm just bringing up a point.
Do we have to vote on them?
Of course you do.
Yeah, and that's where my concern would be voting.
Without public input?
Without public input, yes.
You don't, you, you don't have to entertain public input on these matters.
Yeah.
But it's my opinion that's a policy that we need to.
Okay, comments from others?
So you're meeting at six?
Six thirty.
It says four thirty on these, I'm not gonna redo these for you, but I will post it as six thirty, if you wanna take one and pass it down.
So for the record, we'll meet on Thursday, the twentieth, at six thirty PM, as, as per normal plan. Okay. Is there anything else anyone on the committee or the board would like to discuss?
Mr. Chairman, are we on three, briefings and reports by board members?
Yes.
Okay, just informational, I attended the Harwich Center Initiative second, I believe, meeting last night. And it was informative for me. I wasn't there as a representative of the planning board, I was there as a president of Harwich Center. And my initial reaction was there was a lot of items that go into the initiative and, and all that encompasses, and there seemed to be a struggle of how to start, and I believe that the way they ended up with at last night's meeting was they were gonna try to schedule another meeting with all of the stakeholders. And there was some discussion about who are the stakeholders, not just necessarily the business owners on Main Street or the residents on Main Street, but really anybody in the town of Harwich is a, is a stakeholder.
Stakeholder, correct.
But I know that they were gonna key in on the people that, business owners and residences specifically go after them, so I just wanted to give an update to the committee on that.
That's good.
I also mentioned to them, 'cause there was a fair amount of discussion about community involvement and planning, and that I had attended the meeting, community and planning with the community involvement. And we have the paper documents from that, and I offered those to the members of the. Pardon me?
I have your copy in my office.
Okay, and I offered them copies of that. I thought it might be helpful as they start to work to draw people in and get feedback to that, and they were receptive as well.
Good, good. Now, when you attend these meetings, you're, you're attending as a citizen, and that's good.
Unless.
Is there anything that we need to be involved in as a planning board, in your opinion, Craig?
I think it would be a good idea to designate a liaison, but I would, I guess I would defer to you to speak.
Yeah.
The, Dan Wolf was voted in as chairman, so maybe you speak with him and see if they have the need. I know that they did talk about they have representatives from other boards in the town.
Actually, don't think they do.
Oh, they mentioned somebody last night.
No.
No?
Link Cooper and Ginny Hewitt from the library are members, but.
Committee, yeah. Okay.
Maybe I misunderstood.
Just a brief. I'm the board's representative on capital outlay.
Yep.
And we made our annual report to the Board of Selectmen, our chairman did, we sat there. We, we have an annual meeting with the finance committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the capital outlay in which basically we make our annual report.
Yep.
And we did that last night.
Good. Is there anything that, that we should be concerned with or involved in or supporting or not supporting?
I, I don't think so. I, I, I was sort of chuckling as I watched the Board of Selectmen. We're, we're throwing around these six-figure numbers, and the Board of Selectmen are like, looking at us like we got, you know, more than one head. But in fact, it's all about how we plan out expenditures over fifty thousand dollars.
Yes.
And we, we lay them out, our original chairman of that board, who's since deceased, he started out with a five-year plan, so.
Yeah.
We always know, for example, in the fire department, we, we have authorized that they would buy a new engine, I think I'm right here.
Yeah.
Next year, and then so many years downstream, they're gonna buy a ladder truck.
Yes.
And, and, and we. And, and, and we, we lay that all out, so nobody should be surprised when that year's budget comes up and the fire chief says, "Well, I've been in the capital outlay plan for seven years."
Right.
And now it's my turn to, to purchase, you know?
Yep, yep, yep. Joe, or Jim?
Okay, I just wanted to remind everybody that the Community Preservation Committee is meeting Thursday of this week at six PM, and that we have already reviewed four of the eight applications. We will be reviewing the other four on Thursday night and having discussions on those four applications. And then at our meetings in January, we'll come to some decision for recommendations for funding.
If you, I have a question.
Sir.
If, if you choose to, to do them all, to, to, you have enough money?
Uh, yes.
That's my only question.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else? Alan? Mary?
Nothing.
David?
No.
Okay.
What is the temperature down there today?
Oh, it's pretty cold, it didn't even get into the seventies.
Oh, isn't that too bad?
Okay.
Sorry, excuse me.
No, that's good, that's good. Okay, so our, our next planning board meeting is Thursday, December 20th, at six thirty PM.
Motion to meeting be adjourned.
Second, all in favor via roll call. Craig?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
I'm in favor as well, so the motion cares. And this meeting is concluded. Thank you all.